Following the HHS Agenda 1 PM, following that, there will be the HHS Deferred Decision Making thereafter, and then it will be the A N slash HHS Deferred Decision Making thereafter. And following that would be the A N HHS GVO Deferred Decision Making. Present with me is my Vice Chair, Senator Akino. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Wednesday, the 20th, at 1:00 PM in Room 225. For those on Zoom, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Each testifier will have one minute to testify. If there's a technical glitch during your time to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. I will be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize that the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to legislators' website. You will find a link on this page for the measure. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committee does have their testimony. See, it's a super-long list of them. And that's the reason we're limiting you to one minute. Okay, please use your time wisely to either add additional comments or you can stand on your written testimony. First up, we have HB 2712 relating to autism. First up is D-CAB. Curby Shaw, I don't see him here in support. Next, we have Department of Human Services providing comments, D-HS.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Judamore Peterson. On behalf of the Department of Human Services, we do stand on our written testimony. We appreciate the intent of the bill as long as the appropriation does not reduce or replace the priorities identified in the executive supplemental budget request for fiscal year 2025. Thank you very much. I'm here and available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Bayada in support. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Miley Martin. In behalf of Bayada, we stand in strong support of this bill. We have an increasing number of families calling us for services because they can't find another Quest provider. Sadly, we have to add these families to our waitlist because with the low reimbursement rates, we can't hire or retain enough staff. Waiting, sometimes years, for services means children are not getting the services they need, and this only increases the cost to the state to support individuals with autism across their lifespan. Mahalo for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Christina Libby for Maualoa Learning and Support, Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support, Louis Erchuk, Behavior Analysis No Ka Oi Inc. in support, Christine Walton, Faith Kahakili of Behavior Analysis No Ka Oi also in support, Easter Seal Sabai in support, ABC Group Sabai in support, Jen Stolentino of ABC Group Sabai in support, BTSH in support, Bariel Fernandez Council of Autism Service Providers in support, Susan Local for Martha Ginan, Special Parent Information Network in support. We have Hawaii Association for Behavioral Analysts in support. Are you present? Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Kristin Kobert, on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Behavior Analysis, really representing providers here today as well as consumers of behavior analytic services. You know, unfortunately, as Bayada just testified, we're really looking at challenges in retaining a workforce to serve children, particularly on the Big Island and the other neighbor islands, where we're really just seeing that we can't provide enough services to keep up with the need. And so asking for your support for this bill. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Suzanne Eli, Maui Learning Academy in support, Hawaii Early Intervention Coordinating Council in support, Keri Borosovich, Robert G. Pierce Early Learning Board in support, Crystal Thomas, Horizons Academy of Maui in support, Lauren Rappaport in support. Lauren, are you present? Please come on up.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify in strong support of HB 2712, HT1. My name is Lauren Rappaport, and I'm a Master's of Social Work student at the University of Hawaii at Manoa. Through my master's, I've interned at an interdisciplinary program focused on disability from which I've been able to gain the insights of professionals in many health and mental health-related fields. From these conversations, it's clear to me that children with autism spectrum disorder on MedQuest plans are often forced to wait years to access ABA services, widening the health equity gap that already exists among low socioeconomic families. It's also clear to me that RBTs whose agencies accept MedQuest ABA clients can't afford to pay their living costs. As a result, RBTs are forced to get a second job or leave the ABA field in Hawaii. Increasing MedQuest reimbursement rates will likely reach improvements in hiring retention of ABA providers and which will shorten waiting times for ABA services for children, adolescents, and young adults with ASD on MedQuest plans. I urge you to support HB 2712, HT1. Mahalo, New Inoa, for this opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Jocelyn Miller in support. Thirty-six other individuals in support. Anybody here present wishing to testify HB 2712? We don't have anyone in opposition. Okay, moving on. HB, I don't know, HB 2712. We're moving on unless you've got one minute.
One minute. Okay, so the purpose of this act is to set forth an appropriation of funds for applied behavior analysis services for persons with autism. It requires the DHS to pursue maximum federal matching grants. So, applied behavior assessments can help with diagnosing autism when they're displaying a spectrum of symptoms and signs that can be characterized as autistic disorder. Autism spectrum disorder is a developmental disability caused by a neurodivergent medical condition, which is debilitating to the person. Those who suffer from autism characteristics can make life very challenging. Examples of social communication and interaction skills and social interactions can be characterized by the following social symptoms and repetitive behaviors, such as avoids or does not keep eye contact, so lacks the ability to effectively grasp communication skills, does not notice when others are hurt or upset by 24 months of age, lacks the ability to recognize emotions, repeats words or phrases over and over again, also called echolalia, and must play with toys, is focused on parts of objects, is upset by minor adjustments. So it's important to have qualified nurses and doctors who work with persons suffering from such a debilitating condition
Thank you, Angela.
to improve the quality of life and health.
Thank you, Angela. Okay, thank you. Next up, anybody else wishing to testify on HB 2712? Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. HB 2425 relating to child abuse and neglect, Central Registry. First up, Attorney General in support.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Lynn Yeomans. I'm a Deputy Attorney General, and we're testifying in strong support of this bill. We ask for one technical amendment adding back a definition from 587A to reflect, just to clarify how that definition will be used in the eventual bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Department of Human Services in support.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Daisy Hartsfield, Social Services Division Administrative for the Department of Human Services. I'm here on behalf of Director Kathy Betts. The department did submit written testimony in support of this administrative measure. We offered comments as well as respectfully requesting that this measure become effective on July 1st, 2025, if passed, so that the department can have the adequate time to make necessary changes to implement this measure. And I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Marilyn Yamamoto, Hawaii Coalition for Child Protective Reform, providing comments. Marilyn, are you present on Zoom?
They're not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, moving on. HB, members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on. HB 2713 relating to adoption assistance. First up, we have Kathy Betts, Department of Human Services, providing comments.
Aloha again, Chair. On behalf of the department, the department did submit written testimony. It appreciates the intent of this bill and offered comments. In regards to any appropriation that's tied to this bill, we would ask that any appropriation not reduce or replace a budget priority identified in the executive budget. I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. No one else having registered testify? Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 2713 relating to adoption assistance? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, Daisy, come on up. I have a question. Okay, so there's a blank appropriation. I'm not the introducer. Do you know how much the introducer was expecting to ask? And is any of it part of your budget?
Yes, Chair. I don't recall the exact amount. It is over $600,000, and it is currently included in the recommended budget by the Finance Committee.
Okay, so it's over 1,800. Okay, so I'll put that down as part of committee report. $600,000, right?
$600,000 plus. I don't know the exact figure off the top of my head. I can provide it to you, though, later.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
HB 1,800. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing to ask questions regarding 2713? Seeing none, moving on. HB 2535 relating to childcare. First up, Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support, Michelle McCoy.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Executive Office of Early Learning in support. UICO. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Department of Human Services providing comments. DHS, are you present on Zoom?
They're not present.
Well, they're in person. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Aloha United Way in support. Next, we have Sheri Nakamura of He'e Coalition in support. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks in support. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Early Childhood Action Strategy in support. Thank you. Next, we have Parents and Children Together in support, AAUW in support, Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support, Save Medicaid Hawaii in support, Commit to Kiki in support, Chamber of Sustainable Commerce in support, Early Learning Board in support, 25 other individuals on support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 2535? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. HB 1964 relating to early childcare. First up, Executive Office of Early Learning in support.
I stand on our written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have OHA in support. Michelle? Thank you. DHS providing comments. Okay, so, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have County of Hawaii, Doug Adams, Department of Research and Development in support. Sheri Nakamura for He'e Coalition in support. Thank you. Hawaii Children's Action Network, Debbie Seismann in support.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. Deborah Seismann, on behalf of Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks. We're in strong support of this measure. It's one of our priorities for this session. And I would just like to point out we have figures and details in our testimony. This is crucial for this year because we have been helping to fill the leaky bucket that we have with childcare of folks leaving the sector for higher-paying jobs with federal COVID-era monies that end this year. So it is critical that we start to fill those gaps with some state funds if we hope to meet our goals, if not to stop losing childcare providers, but actually to start growing the number of folks in the workforce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Vivian Eto, Early Childhood Action Strategy in support.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Vivian Eto with Early Childhood Action Strategy. We stand in strong support of this measure. You have our written testimony, but I really want to underscore the impact that the workforce is having in our capacity. We are losing for the past eight months an average of 100 licensed childcare seats per month, and childcare providers will point to our workforce crisis as the major reason. This issue is really undermining the state's ability to expand early learning for children. It's undermining our economic goals and certainly undermining the health and well-being of our children and families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm Ms. Joshua Wish of Honolulu. Okay, thank you very much. Apologize for that. And another person of Honolulu Collaborative Community Organization in support, AAUW in support, Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support, Angelina Mercado, Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence in support, John Fink, Aloha United Way in support, Parents and Children Together in support, Early Learning Board in support, Chamber of Sustainable Commerce in support, Elizabeth Pujiaro, Pujiaro and Rosenbaum in support, Doris Matsunaga, Save Medicaid Hawaii in support, Commit to Kiki in support, Hawaii Association for the Education of Young Children in support, University of Hawaii in support, Hawaii Women Lawyers in support, Hawaii State Democratic Women's Caucus in support, Susan S. Gajal in support, 25 other individuals in support. Anybody else wishing to testify? Come on up.
Aloha, committee. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES in strong support. So this act will enhance the early childcare care and boost the childhood education programs and policies being heard this season in strong support of the affordable early childhood care and education for especially the marginalized communities and impoverished neighborhoods. And I think this will also enhance the work of the LG's office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 1964? Members, any questions? So DHS, I have a question. Could you come on up? Okay, so, and I forgot to ask this on the last one, which is similar in that it supports childcare. The other one's Child Care Contracts Pilot Program. Federal Child Care Block Grants. Why can't we use it for this one and/or the prior measure?
So the federal requirements don't allow us to provide, like, a direct subsidy?
Directly to the child provider?
To the childcare staff.
Okay, and I forgot to ask this on the last one about the contracting classrooms. Could the federal childcare block grants be used for that? Come on up. HB 2535.
Hi, Chair. Yes, we can use the CCDF monies for the contracts.
Okay, so do we need any state matching funds for the other one, the HB 2535? Because you didn't say. It's not in your DHS.
Matching, I'm gonna say.
And it doesn't even say how much.
For that one, you're asking for more input, I would say, from the proponents of the measure so that we can have a pretty good.
Okay, that's right. We did ask for it. Okay, thank you. And Debbie Seismann, come on up. You're a proponent, I think, of both. So we've got figures on this latest one, 1964, with all general funds, which is going to be difficult in this year. But the prior one, which where we can use federal funds for, do you have any monies? I mean, any budgetary amounts?
Do I have budgetary amounts?
Yes.
Oh, that would be DHS's.
Well, they're saying that they don't know.
I think they would have to get back to you on their ability to discover funds and coordinate.
So, thank you.
I'm the nonprofit advocate, so.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, not the department.
Okay, E O E L, do you folks have figures?
I know you.
Nobody has figures. Okay, um, okay. Sorry about backtracking. Any other questions, members, for either 1964 or the other one, 2535? Seeing none, moving on. HB 1662 relating to childcare tax credit. Office of Hawaii Affairs in support.
Yes, we stand on our written testimony in support.
Okay, next one. Executive Office on Early Learning in support.
We stand on our written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you. Next is Office of the Governor in support. Department of Human Services in support. Department of Taxation providing comments. Come on up.
Chair, Vice Chair, Harrison Kirk, no tax. We are here to stand on our written testimony and provide comments and answer questions again.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Douglas Adams, County of Hawaii, Department of R and D in support. And HB 1662. We have Twisconlan, I see you up front. Ayatzi in support. I didn't register.
Oh, Chair, Vice Chair, committee to be scanned, President, I T C 65. Send in strong support. Matter a little long way for us helping working families. Available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Catholic Charities of Hawaii in support. I see Betty Lou, you gotta turn on your mic. Okay, please proceed.
I'm Betty Lou Larson with Catholic Church Hawaii. Thank you very much for hearing this bill. This is a priority for us. We'll stand on our written testimony and just note that our strong support is based on the need to really help our struggling ALIS families, and this would also raise many children out of poverty. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Devin Thomas, Hawaii Appleseed. I see you present in support. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and member of the committee. I am Devin Thomas, speaking on behalf of Hawaii Appleseed in support of this bill. Not to reiterate everything in my testimony, but I just want to highlight the fact that the federal child tax credit lifted 3 million children out of poverty in 2021 when it was expanded. That expansion expired, and we are left in a situation now where states are stepping in to create their own complementary state-level child tax credits. And Hawaii can be the next one. We urge this committee to return to the originally provided amount in HB 1662, which was $650 per child under the age of 18. We believe that this is the bare minimum that we need to help our working families survive and put food on the table for their children, provide for educational expenses, and so on. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Debbie Seismann, Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks in support.
We stand on our written testimony in support.
If L C I O, Andy Pereira in support. Hawaii Pacific Public Health Institute, Nate Hicks in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, member of the committee. Nate Hicks, Hawaii Public Health Institute, in support of this measure. We know we have way too many families struggling to make ends meet in Hawaii. This would be a huge benefit to not only the family, or not only to the parents, but to the children. They have long-term health impacts by being impoverished at the young age. This investment upfront will save us money in the long term. So, very much support this bill. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have, that was Nate Hicks. Okay, Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support. Ayatzi Kevin, not you, in support. Hawaii Home Ownership Center, Rain Yamamoto in support. Ryan Kusumoto of PACT, Parents and Children Together in support. Early Childhood Action Strategy in support. Aloha United Way in support. John Fink of Aloha United Way in support. Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action in support. John Bickle, Americans for Democratic Action Hawaii in support. Commit to Kiki in support. Breastfeeding Hawaii in support. Early Learning Board in support. Stonewall Caucus of Democratic Party, Michael Galoy in support. Are you present, Michael?
They're not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, Honolulu Collaborative Community Organization support. Joshua Wish in support. Okay, thank you. Chris Colfield, Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus in support. Democratic Party of Hawaii Labor Caucus, Jason Bradshaw in support. Immoo Alliance in support. Tax Foundation of Hawaii providing comments. Tammy Machika, are you present?
They're also not present on Zoom.
Okay, next, we have Sergio Alcubilla. I see you present, Hawaii Worker Center in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Sergio Alcubilla from the Hawaii Worker Center. We stand in strong support of this measure. I just, I do want to thank each and every single one of you for the members present here today for all of your support for ALIS families. You know, I was thinking of what to say to Health and Human Services regarding a Kiki tax credit bill. And the thing that really comes to mind for me is just really the mental health of those that are taking care of their families. You know, I can't tell you how many times I've sat there and looked at our expenses for the month and just trying to figure out if we're going to make it for the month. You know, and that's one of the things that workers really care for is, you know, how will they make ends meet here in Hawaii? We can either increase income or lower costs, and this bill really seeks to increase income, and it would be a big help to our working families. Thank you again, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of this committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have 32 other individuals in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 1662? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, no tax. I have a question. Come on up. Okay, you heard the testifier, I think, from Appleseed, which said that there was a prior child tax credit, federal tax credit that is expiring, and this basically continues on a statewide level. How much is this going to cost the state?
Well, there's no numbers in this bill. I do have numbers of what the bill would cost with the numbers that were in there before they were taken out by the FinCEN.
And how much was that?
So if this bill took effect starting in 2025 with the proposed amounts that were in the original version of the bill, you'd have expected revenue loss of $86.5 million in 2026, $86.7 in 2027, $87.5 in 2028, $88.4 in 2029, and $89.4 in 2030.
Could you provide those figures to us so we can just refer to in committee?
I certainly can, yes.
Okay. Okay, um, the administration in another bill that we deferred to decision-making referred to its own bill. I believe it was HB, do I have it yet? I need my other. Which was a more comprehensive tax measure that only goes to RAM. I believe it was HB 2404.
Right.
And that also included a dependency credit. Does the Department of Taxation have any preference in passing this bill or HB 2404?
Just 2404 is the governor's package, and the comprehensiveness of that would be the preference between the two.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moving on. Next one, HB 2216. Relating to, I believe it's HB 2216, no, 1974, excuse me. 1974. State relating to social services. State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support. Okay, next up, we have Kathy Betts, Department of Human Services in support. DHS, Daisy Hartsfield. Thank you. Next, we have B-CAB in support. BOH, Executive Office of Aging in support. ARP on Zoom.
ARP stands on its testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Next, we have IOWU Local 1000 in support. Rose Marie Sebastian, are you present? I think you're, come on up. In support. Yes, thank you very much. Hawaii Self Advocacy Advisory Council in support. Le Fountain, Arc in Hawaii in support. Christina Hogan, Arc in Hawaii in support. James Labrie in support. And four other individuals in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 1974? Okay, Maribel, come on up first.
Maribel Tan, President of Adult Foster Home Care Association of Hawaii and also a member of the Coalition of Caregivers. We are in strong support of HB 1974. Thank you for the opportunity and your questions.[1784.22]
Thank you, Maribel. Okay, I see Angela, you want to testify on nineteen seventy-four? This is personal allowance. Increase. No, thank you. James Labrie, nineteen seventy-four? Hi, come on up. In support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee. My name is James Libby. I strongly support this bill personally because I receive personal allowance of fifty dollars, which I strongly support this bill to increase the the personal allowance to seventy-five dollars, being that Hawaii's 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 cost of living is very expensive and that little amount of increase would help me buy food or clothing or even shower shower accessories that we need. So, I would strongly support this testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, James. Anybody else wishing testify on HB nineteen seventy-four? Angela, you got one minute? Everybody's already in support.
Okay. Aloha, Angela Melody Young, Testifying in Strong Support on behalf of CARES. So, those who are suffering from a disability or debilitating condition can get financial assistance from the federal or state level. At the federal level is a social security program. At the state level is a financial assistance program from DHS. So, this would be an extra funding for their monthly allowance. And I think we should make this happen because the disability income for the debilitated persons is something that we should consider. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing testify on HB nineteen seventy-four? Okay, seeing that members any questions? Okay, seeing that, moving on. HB twenty-two sixteen, relating to Care Homes. First up, State Council on Developmental Disabilities and Support. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Department of Human Services and Support. Thank you. Next, this is B CAB in Support, A R P, Audrey, are you present?
Yes, A R P stands in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maribel Tan in Support.
Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. I'm Maribel Tan, President of the Adult Foster Home Care Association of Hawaii and also Member of the Coalition of Caregivers, representing ninety percent of the caregivers. C C F F H and E R T with supplies about three thousand plus statewide beds to statewide elderly and disabled here in Hawaii residents, a very minimal increase for over fifteen years. We born and brought of inflation and other cost increases. We're here almost every year pleading for your support. We know that our friends and families in Lahaina is our priority right now, but please look at our situation also because we cannot continue our, doing our business if we cannot provide for our families. Thank you for the opportunity and I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Maribel. Okay, next, we have Maribel Tan again, Coalition of Caregivers and Support. You're okay, right? I L W U Local One Thousand and Support, Rose Marie.
Good afternoon Chair, good afternoon Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Yes, Rose Sebastian, I'm speaking on behalf of Ilwo Local One Thousand and all the other caregivers who could have been here this afternoon. Thank you so much for this bill. We appreciate it. We are in support according to our written testimony. However, I have a few questions, I have one question. When this bill was presented, was heard at the House, there was an amount of hundred thirty-two ten to increase the ceiling of the state supplement. However, this bill is blank. There's no amount. Is there a reason why?
We don't answer questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm learning the rules here. Yes, that was my only concern.
Okay, thank you very much.
How can we support a bill that's zero or empty or blank otherwise? But we appreciate.
We will, we will ask Department of Human Services.
Yes.
How to fill in the blank. Who is right there?
Yes, because that hundred thirty-two that was mentioned, we are thankful, but if the state is really serious in taking care of the coconut's future, then I think that you guys should consider also looking at our increases fairly.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, we have Okay, I L W U Local One Thousand, Arlene Hanson Support, Leilani Domingo of A F H A H and Support. Charlene Bogato, A F H A and Support. Arlene Adpaulta and Support. Janine Abreu and Support. Sonia Padley, Padley Dow and Support. Luana Douglas Con and Support. Susan Domingo Ganitano and Support. Karina Ocampo, United Community Healthcare Hawaii and Support. Mariello Carinas and Support. Thelma Orkarl and Support. James Labrie and Support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. James Libby, I strongly support this bill to support this deal because it would also help case managers have an easier way to look for foster homes if needed and also by approving this bill, it would prevent caregiver burnout because it is a twenty-four seven type of job that without the increase of payment. I have seen myself, or I have heard myself that they are not able to find homes because of the amount of work that these caregivers need to put in to become a twenty-four seven caregiver. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um. Next, we have Roma Magnaya in Support. Are you present, Roman, Roma?
No, they're not, they're not present on Zoom.
Mercedes Architola Providing Comments. Twenty-two other individuals in Support. Anybody else wishing to testify? Okay, I see. Angela, you're already here. Come on up. You got one minute and then the next person.
Angela Melody Young, Testifying in Strong Support on behalf of CARES. So, this act will set forth a policy to support the facilities and nurses which supply beds and provide care to those who are suffering from medical conditions and need assisted living. This statutory provision, this law appropriates funds for those that are eligible for federal supplemental security income or public assistance by increasing the cap on state supplemental payments for Type One Adult Residential Care Homes, Licensed Developmental Disabilities, Domesticary Homes, Community Care Foster Family Homes, Certified Adult Foster Homes and Type Two Adult Residential Care Homes. So, there was something initiated last year for the nurses of the facilities to get their pay with a structure of a bill very similar to what's in front of us today. And CARES is in strong support of the bills for the nurses and the facilities for assisted living care. And I think it will be easier if there's consideration to implement a policy to integrate the different levels of facilities into one section instead of all the different sections. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next up, I L W U, please identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Chair, Senator Venturen, Chair, Vice Chair Aquino and all the committee members. My name is Susan Kinabo, a licensed adult residential care home operator for the past thirty years and currently the President of I L W U Local One Thousand. Licensed community care home operators across the state of Hawaii are compelled by your support to favor the bill twenty-two sixteen that will increase the pay for all S S I and state supplement recipients. We are receiving forty-one dollars and six cents per day for the past sixteen years for a twenty-four seven workload with no pay increase to at least fit in with the inflation. This situation alone had prompted a lot of operators to close their doors to medicate payment patients and turn their businesses into private paying patients only. With the imminent large numbers of elderly people in Hawaii with retirement accounts and significant assets are moderate, yet be in need of twenty-four seven care, a lot of these elderly and their families will look into having.
Everybody's in support. We got all of you. There's nobody against us, okay? Thank you.
This is the family member.
I understand. We can move on. You gotta allow us to make decisions, Nate, too. Okay, thank you. Next up, anybody else on HB twenty-two sixteen? Okay, seeing that, moving on. HB seventeen seventy-two. Regarding relating to fall prevention. First up, we have Office of Foreign Affairs in Support. Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Department of Health in Support. Robert Lau, are you present?
They're not present on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Kirby Shaw, D CAB in Support. Department of Health in Support. Department of Health Executive Office of Aging and Support, Carolyn Carraway. Next up, we have I C A R P, Audrey Sugah Nakagawa in Support.
Yes, we stand our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Alzheimer's Association and Support. Rob Van Tassel, Catholic Charity Hawaii and Support. Hawaii State Teachers Association Retired and Support. Three other individuals in Support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB seventeen? Come on up.
I apologize for my attire. Didn't know I was coming. No offense to. My name is Stanley Michaels, Past Fall Prevention Coordinator of the State of Hawaii for twenty years. I'm retired now, but this is a very important project. Investing in fall prevention enables you to stop a lot of the care home and the other difficulties. If you beat it at the punch, fight it at the pole, you stay ahead. In a nutshell, when we operate at full capacity and I notice you reduce, there's no money left in the bill. You took a blank. So, I hope that's so you're going to expand a hundred thousand from what it was. Every dollar that you spend saves lives, saves time, saves energy, saves earth. CDC proved it. We proved it in the Civil of Hawaii by being the best in the nation. We can do it again. We just need a couple bucks. I appreciate your time and considerations. Again, my apologies for my casual attire. I discovered that Mr. Lau couldn't be here, so I jumped in the car. Thank you very, very much. I have twenty-five pages, copies of my testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing testify on HB seventeen seventy-two? Okay, questions, members? I would have asked Department of Health, but they're not here.
Okay.
Okay, come on up. Were you testifying for Department of Health?
I will. And the private individual people are retired. I apologize my better to staff.
Okay, um, I want to know how much to put in the blank. Was it a hundred thousand?
It was at a hundred thousand. And our maximum budget was about one twelve when we had our peak, when we had the very best year. When CDC discovered we had the lowest injuries in the nation. But if you put a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand in, you're going to give us a great shot.
Was that, was that how much it was funded?
Yeah, that was the original request on the, on the bill, of course.
Okay, your name again is?
My name is Stanley Michaels.
Stanley Michaels, retired.
Yes, twenty years as Fall Prevention Coordinator.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
I'm so respectful and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions, members? Seeing that, moving on. Next up, HB seventeen seventy-one relating to Hawaii Health Aging Partnership. First up, D C, no, Council on Developmental Disabilities and Support. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Michelle McCloy, Office of Foreign Affairs and Support. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Pabera in Support, D O H Executive Office on Aging, Carolyn.
Yes, hi Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you so much for hearing this measure. I just wanted to offer comments. We support the intent of the Healthy Aging Partnership. It improves the overall health and well-being of the state's aging population by reducing health disparities. We actually have a housekeeping measure in the budget bill, House Bill eighteen hundred, that will move funding from one line item to the Healthy Aging Partnership and there would not be a need for an appropriation. So, we'd like to request that that be the vehicle for the Healthy Aging Partnership and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Pearl City Community Church, thirty-two individuals. They all provided in support, how healthy, what helpful it was for them. Next, we have A R P, Audrey Sugah Nakagawa in Support.
Yes, we stand our, we stand our testimony in support. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Gary Simon, Hawaiian Family Caregiver Coalition in Support. Seven other individuals in Support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB seventeen seventy-one? Members, any questions? Okay, moving on. HB twenty-two twenty-four. Relating to Long-Term Care. First up, Carolyn Carraway, Office of Aging and Support.
Yes, we stand in strong support of this measure. This is to provide for a long-term care plan and also for a one-point-oh full-time equivalent of a long-term care planner in our office. And yeah, my testimony and we stand in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have A R P and Support. Audrey.
Yes, A R P stands on our written testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Next, we have I L W U Local One Thousand, Rose Marie in Support.
Yes, we stand on our written testimony, strong support.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Paige Choi, Health Care Association of Hawaii and Support. Anybody else wishing testify on HB twenty-two twenty-four? Seeing that, members any questions? Okay, moving on. HB fifteen fifty-three. Excuse me. Relating to death benefits. First up, Department of Human Services Providing Comments.
Hello, Chair, Judy Moore Peterson, on behalf of the Department of Human Services and Director Betts. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments. We appreciate the intent of this bill so long as any appropriation does not reduce or replace the priorities identified in the governor's budget. Thank you so much and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, and I've been corrected. This is HB fifteen thirty-three. Thank you, Judy Moore Peterson. Next, Hawaii Funeral and Cemetery Association, Jay Morford, are you present?
I am. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Members. Appreciate your time this afternoon. My name is Jay Morford. I represent the Hawaii Funeral and Cemetery Association. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure and we would like to ask if the original amount of sixteen hundred dollars be inserted back into the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Millie Lonnie Group Inc. in Support. Rose Marie Sebastian, I L W U in Support. You can stand on your written testimony. Thank you. Mitchell Dodo in Support. Anybody else wishing testify on HB fifteen thirty-three? Members, any questions? So, Judy, I have a question. Judy, can you get back on?
Trying. Hello.
Thank you. So, your written testimony is D H S. DHS paid two-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, six-hundred dollars for an eight-hundred-dollar benefit la-last year.
That's correct.
So this gets reduced to sixteen hundred as originally requested.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be an additional two-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, six-hundred?
It would.
Okay, is any of that, are these all going to be, um, general funds, or is any of it going to be fed?
None, none of it is federal. It is all general funds.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. HB four-oh-eight. Relating to health. First up, John Mizuno, Statewide Office on Homelessness and Housing Solutions in support, not present. State Council on Developmental Disability providing comments.
Thank you, Chair. Committee members, Saint Chip Bartolos, Executive Director for the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Um, we, um. We oppose the extension from three to four. Um, based on there is lots of vacancies already. And just to do it, just because didn't make sense to us. Uh, we are concerned about our vulnerable population that are, are in these homes. We, we met with caregivers. Over the weekend, we asked, why are you taking? There's five hundred vacancies, four hundred Oahu throughout. They're afraid. They're scared. Other ones, when we asked, why are you taking them? They need the money. We'll chance them. We'll take that fourth one. We get some extra money. We need it. So we're very concerned about this measure. We understand, and we, we just ask if the vacancies are full, yes, look into extending to four for capacity building. We understand that. But being that there are vacancies and individuals, the caregivers are afraid to take some individuals. We ask that the bill also includes some sort of training for these caregivers, trauma-informed care. When individuals forced to live on the streets or forced to live in an institution, when they come out, they have behaviors that aren't always typical that these caregivers may be used from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. Kathy Betts, Department of Human Services providing comments. Judy Moore Peterson, please proceed.
Hello, Chair, uh, members of the committee. Gina Moore Peterson, on behalf of the Department of Human Services, we do stand on our. Uh, on our written testimony, offering comments. We appreciate the intent of this measure. Uh, we do defer to the Department of Health regarding, um, their, uh, questions of. Uh, safety and licensing. Thank you so much. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have ILWU Local One Thousand providing comments.
Yes, comments on the chair. May I say this? Uh, it's, it's a good thing, but in a way, it's not in the best interest of. Either the caregiver, caregiver or the patient. I think that this caregiver should be given. Uh, an increase in their long-term care reimbursement first before even. Adding a burden of care to these caregivers. Um, with, with this proposed, uh, bill. Uh, you give additional, uh, client to the caregiver who, who will be so overworked. And less pay. I don't think that's right. And, you know, they are not able to hire additional help because of their low current pay right now. So I think that. Uh, you guys should look at, uh, increasing their reimbursements first before looking into adding an, an additional bet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on HB four-oh-eight? Yes, come on up.
Your vote on Monday. I didn't get this until. Yes.
Yeah, I'm, um, Lauren Kim, Policy Officer for the department. Uh, we're offering comments, and we submitted very late testimony. I took it off the printer like an hour ago. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry for that if you're just, since you're just having the chance to read it now. Uh, we acknowledge that. Adding a fourth, uh, adult to a CCFH may be a useful tool in the toolbox. But, uh, reiterating what Ms. Bartolos said, there are currently five hundred vacancies, and we would hope to see. Um, that number come down before exploring, uh, the fourth option. But should the legislature pursue this? Uh, we are requesting amendments that get to, and they're in the last couple pages highlighted in yellow. Um, that require, um, that get at, uh, patient safety assurances. An evaluation since the intent of this is, uh, an extension of homelessness policy. Uh, a sunset date because, again, we are testing out policy. And, uh, and of a way with DOH to, um, identify some of the roles and responsibilities. And lastly, uh, an evaluation. To determine its, its efficacy. Um, and with that, I will. Leave it. With our comments, and we will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB four-oh-eight? Okay, Angela, you got one minute. Come on up.
So, um, Angela Melody Young testifying in strong support. Um. So this act will set forth policies within the Department of Health. Um, to create provisions for the community care foster family homes. Um, and, um, so we're in support of this proposal. So the State Department. Of Human Services certifies community care foster family homes to enable those needing care in an intermediate care facility. Or in a skilled nursing facility to remain in a home. This prevents institutionali-, institutionalization and the cost of care. In a community care foster family. Is more reasonable than in an intermediate care facility or a skilled nursing facility. This can help with care for, um, for example, fall preventions and a variety of medical conditions and emergency responses necessary. For appropriate care. Um, so in strong support.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else looking to testify on HB four-oh-eight? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, I'm going to recess for decision-making. Um, sure. Recalling the one o'clock agenda for HHS for decision-making. For HB twenty-seven twelve, Chair's recommendation is to pass it, as is, we're going to note in the committee report. Um, the high need for the increase that provides. That prevents providers currently from hiring qualified practitioners. And we're going to report also the DHS proposed low, medium, and high-budget scenarios. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Uh, we're going to leave the defective date on it. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes are.
Okay, House Bill twenty-seven twelve, House Draft One, recommendation is to pass, as is Chair votes, aye. Vice Chair votes, aye. Senator Kail Kooloe.
Aye.
Senator Shumwakuru.
Aye.
Senator Alwad, excuse, recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, um, thank you. Next, um, for HB twenty-four twenty-five. Chair's recommendation is to pass with Attorney General's proposed amendments and add an effective date of July one, twenty-twenty-five. So pass with amendments. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, for members are present, any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, for HB twenty-seven thirteen, noting the blank appropriation, we're going to pass this, as is, we're going to note in the committee report. Approximately six hundred thousand is already in the, is already in HB eighteen-hundred. Um. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, House Bill twenty-seven thirteen, House Draft One, recommendation is to pass, as is.
Yes.
Okay. All right, four members are present, any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, for HB twenty-five thirty-five, we're also gonna, um. Pass this, as is, we're going to note the. We're going to keep the defective date. This needs. A lot of work. Um, but we're going to keep it moving, and hopefully the providers will come up with a figure to put in, to insert in the blank amount. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, for members are present, any reservations, any norms?
Thank you.
Recommendation is adopted.
Could all cell phones be turned off or outside, please? Up to you. It's up to you. We're voting now.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, all members are present. All members are present now, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. For HB nineteen sixty-four, relating to early childcare. Chair's recommendation is to pass with Department of Human Services amendments. We're going to note. In the community, we, in the committee report. That nineteen-point-three million in general funds is need to implement this plus. An additional hu, one hundred thousand for one full-time employee. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, House Bill nineteen sixty-four, House Draft Two, all members are present, any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
For HB sixteen sixty-two. Noting the high amount in the general funds requested by this, um, bill. We're going to defer this in lieu of passing HB seventeen seventy-six, which is going to be in the next decision-making. Um, any con, well, so moving on. For HB nineteen seventy-four. Um, we're going to pass this with amendments. We are going to delete the annual review requested in Section Two, Paragraph G. And add an effective date of October one, twenty-twenty-four. We're going to note in the committee report after the deletion that there is no general fund appropriation needed. That's making it easier to pass. Um, any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, pass with amendments.
Okay, all members are present, any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, for HB twenty-two sixteen, HB two, Chair's going to. Pass this with amendments. We're going to insert an original amount of seven-hundred-eighty-four dollars on page two, line two. And eight-hundred-ninety-two dollars on line six. On page two. Adding an effective date of October one, twenty-twenty-four. We're also going to note in the committee report, per DHS, with these amounts, no, no general fund appropriation is needed. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, pass with amendments.
Okay, all members are present, any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
So for HB seventeen seventy-two, Chair's recommendation is to pass, as is. Um, and we're going to note in the committee report, the original requested amount for the blank to be one-hundred-thousand dollars. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, all members are present, any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. For HB seventeen seventy-one, HB one. Chair is going to defer this per the, um. Office of Aging's request because it's already in the budget. So moving on. HB twenty-two twenty-four. Chair's recommendation is to pass this, as is. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, all members are present, any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. For HB fifteen thirty-three. Chair's recommendation is to pass this, as is, I'm sorry. To pass, as is. We're going to note in the committee report, per DHS, that an eight-hundred-dollar death benefit means that a payment. Means two-hundred-twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred dollars in general funds. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, all members are present, any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
HB four-oh-eight. Chair's recommendation is. We're going to keep this moving. Um, we understand. Um. The foster care homes concerns. I mean. We're going to need to increase you folks' pay before we add in more burdens. Um. We're going to put in Department of Health's concerns, which basically requires all the kind of. Safeguards that in the event this comes in. Um. Will be required before we move this on. So we're going to pass this with Department of Health's amendments. And the Disability Council's amendments that requires the five hundred. Vacancies be filled first before it passes. We're going to leave the defective date. Um, because we're going to get the Governor's Coordinator for Homelessness and Housing Solutions. To look at our concerns. Before we pass this. Okay, so we're going to leave the defective date for, for their consideration. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, House Bill four-oh-eight, House Draft Two, uh, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes, aye. Vice Chair votes, reservations. Senator Kail Kooloe.
Aye.
Senator Shumwakuru.
Aye.
Senator Alwad.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, so we're going to go to the deferred decision-making calendar. For. HB seventeen sixty-nine relating to taxation establishes a refundable family caregiver tax credit. Um, just like the child tax credit and the following tax credit that we're going to be referring to. HB seventeen seventy-six. Um, Chair's recommendation is to defer HB seventeen sixty-nine in lieu of HB seventeen seventy-six, HB two. I want to. I just want to make sure that people know that I am in favor of giving. Caregivers a tax credit. Um, being a caregiver myself and having had to. Have those huge expenses, I fully understand the burdens. But I also am. I also want to give WAM. One tax credit bill with the highest possibility of passing. Because if everyone, anybody who's been watching the legislative session, no appropriation bill has passed WAM. Because of the dire financial straits we've got. So I only want one bill with the highest possibility, and that would be. So we're going to defer the, we're going to defer HB seventeen sixty-nine. We're going to pass HB seventeen seventy-six, but we are going to insert. Um, we're going to gut it and insert the language of HB twenty-four oh-four, which is the Governor's Own Tax Bill. Which has caregiver and dependency tax credit on it, in it. Any comments? And add a defective date of December thirty-one, twenty-fifty. To continue, um, discussion. So we're going to give WAM two bites of the apple passing HB twenty-four oh-four. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB seventeen seventy-six, pass with amendments.
Okay, thank you very much. Chair, Chair votes, aye. Vice Chair votes, aye. Senator Kail Kooloe.
Aye.
Senator Shumwakuru.
Aye.
Senator Alwad. Excuse. Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, um, we are. In recess until we get AEN here for the next, um, hearing. Thank you very much. Okay, recalling the AEN, HHS. Um, decision-making. AEN has already passed these bills, so, um. We are going to. Just concur with their. With their proposed amendment. So HB twenty-seven forty-three. AEN's proposed recommendation, which I concur it with, with, is to pass with amendments. We're going to delete language that would have defined alternative plan, county advisory board, and wastewater treatment plan. Require each county to develop and maintain a wastewater management plan. Require the county to set the amount of cesspool pollution fee at a certain rate. Appropriate funds to the, each county. And appropriate funds for the establishment of positions within the Department of Health. We're going to add. Language that requires a UHC grant college program and UH Water Resources Research Center. To identify specific priority areas in which the county sewer system or other centralized treatment system. Will be expanded or constructed to reduce or eliminate cesspools before January first, twenty-fifty. Authorize the counties to use other revenues, including real property tax revenues. For certain activities that eliminate, reduce, or mitigate the impacts of cesspools. Inappropriates an unspecified amount of funds to the University of Hawaii. And amend language to codify the language of certain definitions. In Chapter eleven dash sixty-two, HAR. Rather refer to it citations to authorize rather than require. Counties to designate sewer improvement districts. Provisions regarding the reporting duties of each county that assesses cesspool pollution fee. And in Section One, to reflect its amended purpose. Define sewer system to reflect the definition of sewer reg. System as defined in HRS three-four-two D dash one. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Passing with amendments for HB twenty-seven forty-three. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes are.
Chair votes, aye. Vice Chair votes, aye. Senator Kail. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Kail Kooloe?
Aye.
Senator Shumakul?
Aye.
Senator Alwad?
No.
Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
So, for HB nineteen eighty-nine, we're just gonna pass that with adjusting the defective date to July one, twenty fifty. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Okay, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Any reservations, any norms? Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you guys very much for sticking around.